That, so he doesn't know anything about a contract because I forgot he had one with Chuck. Okay, yeah, that's fine. And he, I mean, but he is gonna be part time, so he's not gonna be like Chuck. Chuck did not want part time.
We told him at least twenty hours.
Okay, it is actually, is it seven? On the meeting of the Argus Town Council Order. Roll call.
Randy Snee.
Adverkus.
Sean Harley.
Robert Byers.
Derek Jones will go back again.
Lisa Malaney.
Pleasure of allegiance. Back in the corner.
Ledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just as a reminder, we are broadcasting, so. Keep that in mind. Sure, minutes from the eight twenty-seven twenty-five regular session.
Motion to accept the minutes of eight twenty-seven twenty-five regular session.
We have a motion in a second to accept the minutes from the eight twenty-seven twenty-five regular session. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carrying. Citizens input. None, moving right along. Intertained a motion to open the public hearing for the twenty twenty-six budget. Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
A motion and second to open the public hearing. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carrying.
Do you may have any questions on the budget while we're in? So we had to give. Eight thousand dollars more to the park. Or they would. From the general to the park. To make their hundred and seventy thousand dollar budget that you guys agreed on. We also had to give, um. I think fifteen thousand to MBH. And then the fire territory isn't. That's their own business and that's been discussed with Ed. So, um. You guys. Or the budget is exactly what you. Discuss in the workshop. Other than those two items were brought up by Baker Tilly, so.
Yes. I'm just. Thinking out loud. You know, we had to get away, what'd you say, eight thousand dollars more to the park? Lisa. How much more do we give the park eight thousand?
Yes, out of the general fund, which is. I mean, it.
At the same time, uh, where I'm going this, at the same time, I would like to have the option possibly of. Saying, you know, okay, no, we're not gonna do that. You gotta lower your budget by eight thousand somewhere.
But they never spend their entire budget, so.
That's beside the point. It's still been real, it's real tax dollars.
Okay.
Instead of automatically giving it to them, maybe I'd like to see where we start. Being more. Diligent of saying, okay, maybe we instead of. Boosting that out of the general fund because we know how thin it gets by the end of the year. You know, maybe we need to pull some of these back if they can't meet their budget.
And maybe.
To an extent.
Next year, when you do the budget, we can say you have this amount of money that you need to stay in and then. You know, budget that way. We, the town of Argus has always budgeted big, even though we don't spend all the money. And then it just goes to their cash reserve.
I've just, I, like I said, I understand that and I, I appreciate your input on that. Uh, I, I'm just thinking. Of, I mean. I know what property taxes have been doing the last two years, okay? And every dollar we spend like that, that we may not have to spend is putting extra money on people's tax and property taxes. That they may not have to an extent. Grant you the town and it's just for, and the departments need to. Be able to function, but. You know, when we're looking at just, you know, amounts like that, eight, you know, eight to twenty thousand dollars, though, maybe we need to make the budget cut. Instead of just giving it out of the general fund.
And I just wanna point out that we did. Budget minimally this year, so we tried to keep our budget this year almost the same as they were in twenty-five. Because we know what is coming up in twenty-seven with the SB one bill. So. The eight thousand that we had to give them, I don't think was. Over. Abundance of, you know.
I understand. I just was getting to the point of, you know, when I think about. Everything involved in that, I, I would have liked to maybe sit down and reevaluated that before we. Just assume that we would give them more out of that funds all going, going forward. That's, that's, that's all I wanna say on that.
I think, and to add to that, I, I agree. I think next year, obviously because of what's coming potentially in, in twenty twenty-eight or seven. Um, seven, right? Um, I mean, yeah, I think next year our budget process is gonna be, uh, have to be a little bit more.
More than an hour or two.
Yes, yeah. So I mean, yes, I totally agree with that. Any other questions for Lisa? Any other discussion? Intertained a motion to close the public hearing.
So said.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carrying. Full business attorney report.
Um, couple things, guys. Um, Mark and I have been working with a, a contract from this two bar media. Um, I've taken a look at that, gotten back to Mark with it. Um, we're gonna see if we can, we could couple things. Uh, but I think we're on track here and, and gonna make some good progress with this. Hopefully at the next meeting, if things move quickly and. Okay, we should be able to get that approved. Um, the other issue that I had is just today I sent an email, um, I was actually out. One day Tuesday. But, um. Did provide some information, uh, as Sean requested about being able to participate electronically at meetings. And the good news is that Indiana code does allow this. Um. There are some things that we have to make sure that we comply with. In other words. Sean has to be basically, I, I think a Zoom platform is gonna be the best. But he has to be able to communicate simultaneously with the council, hear everything that's said. Add his input and. The public has to be able to hear and see that as well. Okay? The other part of this is that we need to have a resolution, and, and it doesn't say a resolution, it says a written policy, but in my mind.
Resolution.
That says resolution. That basically says what are the guidelines and, and to me, it's really simple. Do we just adopt Indiana code? If you wanna make it more restrictive, you can. Okay, that's very clear in the Indiana code. I didn't put that in the email, but you could make that more restrictive to say. No more than five times a year or something like that. Um, but at any rate, we do need to have a, a resolution that. Kind of adopts our written policy. The last thing I wanna point out. Um. Is that. This, there are certain topics I'm gonna say are off limits. In terms of you being able to vote. You can sit there at the meeting. I think you can listen, observe, probably even ask questions. The word in the statute says participate, so that's a little nebulous. But I'm, I would be very adamant to say you definitely could not vote on things like the budget. Uh, things that increase a fine or a penalty, you could not vote on that. Um, but those are kind of the, the hamstrings, I, I guess, to the statute. But so that's where that's at. And Sean, I don't know exactly, when is it that you?
The next meeting will probably be iffy because that's gonna be the week I have surgery. And like I said, this is just a medical. Thing for me.
I understand, but this is a good policy for the town to have.
Yeah, absolutely.
But. So are you saying, hey, at the next meeting, I'm most likely.
I'm most likely not gonna be at the next meeting and I. I would be iffy as to whether I would be able to participate via Zoom that meeting.
Okay.
But then the following meeting after that would be the one I'll be home then. And I would be able to assist and participate via Zoom.
Okay. So again, I mean, so long as we have a quorum. We could pass a resolution and then include you at the meeting. Even next week, if you were available, but certainly the week after. Um. Again. It, it's up to you, the council, as to what you wanna see in this resolution, but my thought was just, hey, just. Run into the statute.
Did, Derek, in, in my review of that, unless I read the story incorrectly, but did, did that specifically state we could have no more? I mean, we had to have a quorum, a quorum physically present.
It's weird. And, and this is really interesting because it talks about in that statute that. Physically, there has to be at least fifty percent of the members of the council, okay, but. If you have Sean that's sitting there on the Zoom, he still constitutes a quorum to participate. He's not physically present, but for example, if, if three were gone. Okay, out of the five. Not physically present, then we can't proceed with the meeting. But if two were gone. The two that were gone could participate by Zoom. We definitely have a quorum. And can function.
We're just limited for voting on, voting on certain things or all things?
No, on particular things that relate out in that subsection I.
And I would, I guess, I would look for direct. I don't know if you wanna write this in a resolution or not, but. You know, obviously that person, that member's gonna be on a Zoom somewhere, so I would look for. Some kind of guidance from the town attorney before we vote on, say, we have a member on Zoom. I'd like to, this is one of those items that a Zoom member cannot vote on.
It's one of those things, if anybody's on a Zoom, I'm gonna do my best to basically. Try to remember or keep this just kinda handy. But, uh, yeah, I mean, the, things may come up from time to time because. We do tackle a lot of ordinances that deal with a fine or an increase or penalty or something like that, increase in fees, that's another no-no. Um, so yeah, we just gotta watch it. Anybody's on a Zoom?
And when I, when I read that again, I mean, when it says the increase in fees, I mean, I, I was looking at that. I mean, even if we were to do a utili- utility rate increase, I believe that you.
Yes.
That would be, you would not be able to vote on.
Changing schedule at thirty-six A, if we wanna increase the parking ticket or something like that.
I, I get that. I just wanna, I wanna be able to fulfill my. Obligations, you know, representing the town. I am just gonna be very limited. Like I said, this is purely a medical deal for me. And I'm only looking at to be possibly one or two meetings only. I'm hoping to be back on my feet enough.
And if you have the statute, it does provide exceptions for medically related situations. That's, that's why they have this.
So. Then I guess my next question on that would be. Not to drag this out any longer than it has to, but. Mark, coming from your techn- technology side. I assume that you can set all that up so as, and send me the meeting invite through Zoom? Or do we have to get with somebody else outside to?
We can do Zoom or Teams.
I'd rather do Zoom. I think that's what Derek was saying, and we don't wanna do Teams, I don't think, do we?
You. I'm not familiar with all this stuff, to be honest, but I am familiar with Zoom and I know that you can be seen and heard and the public can see and hear you as well.
Yeah.
So I mean, if there was a TV right here where everybody could see and hear you participate. To me, that would be ideal. I don't know if Teams provides the same thing.
Teams identical, it's just we're, we're.
I'm not a fan of Teams.
Microsoft stuff, but, but either of those, yes, we'll have to figure out, because they'll all have monitors that they can get on that same. It's just how to put you out where we're doing it.
And then so I'm like in a small box on their monitor here so they can see me as well.
That doesn't matter. I mean, the, the big thing is the public.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
So make sure you've got on a nice shirt and all that.
Yeah, well, I'm underdressed tonight because it's been a long day.
Okay. So. And again, council, it's up to you folks, but I mean, I can adopt a resolution that in essence, adopt Indiana code, no more nor less. Um, the best skill would be our policy, which.
I, I don't. I, I think that would be a good start, and then as we go on, if we see something that needs to be tweaked later on, maybe amended or whatever.
Maybe at some point you get a council member that's like, I just don't wanna come, I wanna be on there, like, I don't like that.
Yeah, right.
Um, and then yes, amend your resolution at that point in time, but. I don't think he might abuse this, any of this. I think everybody's very attentive and comes to meetings when they're very able.
Any other questions for Derek? If not, I would entertain a motion to have Derek proceed with the resolution addressing. The, uh, request and. Merit basically to see statute.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain because it kinda, it's kinda direct reflection on myself.
It would reflect all of us, though. I don't think.
Then I'll change my vote to aye.
There you go. I mean, I, that's.
I just didn't wanna be contradictory.
It's not specific. Sean, it's not all about you.
Well, I brought it up and I didn't wanna feel like. I, you know, I, I'm very cautious when I do these things like that.
Thanks, Derek.
Anything else?
You're welcome to know, and I'll have that, uh, draft of that resolution around for the next meeting, but that's all I had to report.
Thank you.
Motion to accept attorney report.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the attorney report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, opposed? Motion carrying.
I was an eye on that, sorry.
Yeah, I figured. Uh, zoning officer position, as you all know, we met. Um. To discuss the zoning position that we have, uh, had open and accepted the, an application. We did an interview. Um. I would, uh, entertain a motion to. Be able to offer the position to Mr. Ray Bouchard.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to, uh, amend the motion to merely state that offer the job. Pending the terms that we, uh, proposed to the applicant. Earlier tonight. That's all I wanna go with, as far as I wanna go with that.
Second stays.
Motion stays.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Add, add a little bit to that, if I may.
Yes.
Um. I do wanna have basically a contract. It will still be a, not an employee contract, it'll be employee at will, but it will outline his duties and responsibilities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, expected hours of work, rate of compensation, things of that nature. Um, and I understand you wanna get moving with him. So again, we'll have that around in terms of a draft. No later than the next meeting, then hopefully. Think by next Wednesday, I can probably get a draft around them.
I think, well, and we as a council, I mean, while discussing with Lisa and/or you, what we as a council had. Um, presented or believed to be what those.
That would be great. The sooner the better.
I'll get it. I can give it to you here before you leave tonight.
Okay.
It'll work. Alright, thanks, Derek. Uh, any other old business? Hearing that new business ordinance twenty-five, excuse me, twenty twenty-five twelve budget ordinance first reading.
So you have, um, before you, the first reading or the ordinance that will adopt the twenty twenty-six budget. Um. Normally we read it on the first reading and then next meeting we can do it on the second and third. If you have any questions, now's the time. If, you know, if you're okay with it, we just need a vote. And next meeting, we will need a forum. So. Because we will have to get it passed.
I'll make a motion to. Pass the ordinance resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twelve, um, it directly is the ordinance for the twenty twenty-six. Operating budget for the town of Argus.
First reading.
On the first reading, I'm sorry, thank you.
We have to suspend.
Second.
No.
Yeah, it's, it's an ordinance we're gonna vote on the first one. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Resolution twenty-five oh six establishment, excuse me, establishment of TIF number five. Mark.
You review this. I did, um, I did review this. Mark sent this to me. Um, I took a look at this and, um, I know that it was prepared by an outside firm. Um, I'm okay with basically the language in this. It's basically expanding. Um, a, a TIF. Area, if you will. The only thing I wanna make sure that we do have exhibit A that's attached to the resolution that these folks sign.
Yeah, so once we get to, I'm sending this all to her. This is step number three out of like six. So the redevelopment passed. A resolution, the plan commission passed a resolution, you're going to pass a resolution, this has to go back to the redevelopment plat- pass a resolution. The economic development commission has passed a resolution, and then finally at the end, I believe you pass one final resolution. That'll finalize all this. All those documents will be in all of that.
I'm just saying exhibit A needs to be attached to, because I haven't seen the others. This does refer to exhibit A, is basically the, the area. Okay, but that does need to be attached.
And, and I did attach the plan with the plan commission pass. I attached that to the original that I gave.
And I actually asked about exhibit A and the. So exhibit A basically is the twenty acres. Uh, the ec- the Dewey Economic Development area is actually larger than that. But, but that, this TIF five will create a new allocation area of that twenty acres. The reason we do that is because our timeline will start. Once that taxing session starts. That gives us the twenty-five year timeline. In that allocation area. So are we going to pass this with the stipulation that exhibit A is going to be attached to this? I mean, is that? Exhibit A will have to, the attorney will put it in there. I, I know it's not in there. I did not, she did not send it to me. So exhibit A is the actual map of the, of the twenty acres.
I think. As a council member, my motion would be. To accept resolution two thousand twenty-five oh five. Provided that exhibit A outlines twenty acres that we are expecting to see. Um, next to. Current Woodmill Holdings ownership.
So moved with the exception of its twenty twenty-five dash zero six.
This is oh five.
This is oh five.
Yeah, this is oh five.
Hmm, sorry, the agenda says.
It does.
Oh, it does say.
It's probably oh five, I apologize.
It does say oh five.
I gave that to Mark and then I.
So does your. Re- uh, your, uh, motion stand for twenty twenty-five is oh five?
Well, I don't know. Is it actually oh five?
It's oh five, it says right here.
Heck, as long as it is, yes, then my motion stands per. Zero five, twenty twenty-five, zero five.
We have a second.
I'll say.
We've got a second and a third.
That's fine.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
Mark and I would. Be on that to. Say, we, we wanna see exhibit A.
Well, exhibit A is the origin, I'm sorry, I should have read that before I opened my mouth. Exhibit A was the original when we passed the allocation area, so we have that.
All the same, but no, let's make sure. Exhibit A is. Correct as it relates to this document. Because we're really, we're expanding. This area, but now it does say the original area. But it does say by adding the parcel then on exhibit A, so that would be a different area.
Well, no, it's the same here. So identifying the parcel, so, so the actual allocation area will be this parcel we're adding. The Dewey Street. Uh. EDA, Economic Development Area. Is larger. It covers that seventy-five, like sixty behind it. It covers the, the housing subdivision.
Right.
Old theme, it's a larger area, so all that exhibit A is going to show that's part of what we're making.
There's a new allocation area.
Which is tip five, yes, that's what we're.
That's what exhibit A did, which needs to be provided.
Yes, I got it. Oh, we didn't pass it.
Like, I thought I was missing.
Um, any other new business? I do have one thing. I keep. I passed out a, um, flyer that was provided to us, or actually a pamphlet. Or a report, if you will, from Rick Shaper of the, um, Shepherd's Food Pantry, thanking the town for our. Donation to the food pantry. Of particular note, if you had mo- noticed in the middle there, he's got the, the statistics for the last four years. Um, in twenty twenty-one, the family visits they had was two hundred and forty-two. In twenty twenty-two, it went to three ninety-one. In twenty twenty-three, it was five seventy-four. And in twenty twenty-four, it was eight hundred and eighteen. He told me this year they are well on track to be even more than the eight eighteen, so. He just wanted to let the town know how much they appreciated what we have done for them and that, uh, it does not go unnoticed. Um, I told him I would present that to the council and, and thank him for bringing it. He said, if you have any questions, by all means, give him a call. There's his number on the bottom, but. They, again, they appreciate everything that we did.
Thank, just add a couple notes to that, that. I just wanna state that. You know, I, I know you appreciate what we did, but I think it's very important to. I personally at least appreciate. The services that they're providing out there, that are probably not always at the most convenient times. And the people that they are servicing. Are really needing the help and. I think that. Sometimes it gets overlooked as to how much we appreciate what they're doing for the community.
Yes.
See, w- we do this out there and I say we, only because I'm part of the helper, but we do this. Not only through the food pantry, but we do star night during Christmas where we give. Christmas gifts to the needy children and we provide a meal. Uh, people who come and of course, the, the gym has bouncy houses and everything in it. It's, uh, it's quite a thing. One thing I would like to see, and, and I, I'm not begging for money or nothing, but I, we give to the. Humane Society and the library and everybody else, but I think maybe at some time we might wanna think about. Uh, making a donation. To the food pantry as a, like a line item. Off of our budget or whatever, but. And it wouldn't have to be a large amount, uh. But they, they. They do get some help from the government, but they still, uh.
Yeah. We, and I, and I, and I agree with you, Randy, we need to probably look at something like that.
Yeah.
We, yeah. We, we, I suggested giving this five thousand dollar. Donation that we gave this last year. Because the county had come up with a program to give to all the food pantries and I thought, well, the county's giving some. Why, why don't we step up? We've had a, you know, we, we were able to give some and. This is a very in-depth report compared to a lot of them I've seen. And it is very evident that they need to be continued to be supportive. I don't know that we can give five thousand a year. I don't know, but I think we need to definitely. Sit down and discuss it.
I think when you look in terms of donations, you know, I, I think a lot of people get hung up on the fact that it always has to be cash, 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 cash. And, and, and a case like this, I don't know that it necessarily would have to be. All cash or none cash or, you know, it could be something as simple as. Going up here and seeing Jill and saying, hey, Jill, we wanna, we wanna buy half of a steer from you and we wanna donate it to the pantry.
Could do that.
Yeah, so, so, something like that. I think everybody gets hung up on money donations sometimes, and sometimes that may not be the best.
They used to take, they used to take food, food donations, uh.
Yeah.
Guys would bring cases of Campbell's soup and cases of this and that. But they, they found out that they can go to, uh.
Northern Indiana Food Bank.
Yeah, but, and there's another one, there's another place, but they go and they can buy the stuff.
And each.
It, cheaper what we're able to buy it now.
Yeah.
Meat and stuff. Uh, of course, the price of beef has went up, and, but, but, yeah. A- a- and not only just Jill, but, uh. Hatfield, that does the pork and stuff. There, there, there's a lot of things. Cause a lot of those people. Price of bacon and sausage probably can't afford bacon and sausage, but.
They have it once every, for, for, for better context, our five thousand dollars. Served eight hundred and eighteen families. That's six dollars and eleven cents a family.
Yeah.
That doesn't pay for.
No.
Hardly anything. It's, but, but it went a long way.
It did.
And I think they need to be continued to be supported.
Well, I, you know, I, I just think that, you know. As, as I sit here as a councilman and understand. What, you know, there are people. That are needy in our community. That. Yeah, and, and there are others in our community that would be willing, you know, like, and I'm just using Jill as an example, not saying. Just using her as an example of, you know. We, we go to her and say, hey, we're, we're thinking about doing this, Jill, and we're willing to, you know. Are, are you willing as a business owner and as a local community farmer, are you willing to donate? You know, half the price of a beef to donate to them. You know, we do a partnership. That's where I was going, yeah, that's where I was going, you know. Great partnerships to where we can help. You know. And, and instead, instead of just. Like I said, I think people get hung up on donating money sometimes.
Sequel. Uh. And to our star night sequel is a big partner. And so is American, and they both help quite a bit. And if it wasn't for that, we wouldn't have everything that we have. Uh. Now, Log House has, uh, catered the meal the last. Three years I've been doing it. And Pat and, uh, Robin help with that. Now, they, they. They have a price if you and I went and asked for catering, but then they have a better price for the, for the school or for the pantry, so. Uh, we, we, we do need to get a partnership going and I think that would be a great thing. And, uh, it's something that I'd be willing to work on and to work with, whatever needs to be done.
Well, and I guess another untapped resource in that too, just as a suggestion, maybe the volunteer farmer, their organization is.
Yeah, and, and the reason I guess I don't think about them is because they use it to buy their equipment and stuff. But yeah, they, they could do things, I mean, uh. I, I don't know if they can still do fish fries or whatever, you know more than I do.
Yes, they do fundraisers.
And, and yeah, and then they could donate some of it. Again, it's all for the community.
Sure, exactly.
Yeah, that is.
Not, not us trying to do it all. It's just trying to partner, partner with others that can, can help us. We can get more bang for our buck.
How do we make this?
For as a small of a community as Argus is in comparison to neighboring towns. We have a huge impact when it comes to community support and partnership.
We do.
Yes.
And, and Christmas is coming.
We're very glad.
It's getting close and, uh, so this is something we have to think cause of. Mrs. Spicer, she's already contacted and I wanna make sure we're still, you know, everything's going, so. Yeah.
So is, is there something, and maybe this is something we need to continue to dis- well, we definitely need to continue to discuss it, but is this something where? Maybe we consider a, a small financial donation now. In, in, in knowing Christmas and, and the winter time is coming up and, and maybe we give a small donation now and. While we work on this partnership? Is that something that would?
Let's, let's get our partnership, my opinion. Let's get our partnerships lined up and do it with, and, and let someone partner with us and then. Give them the opportunity to, and we can get more like that.
Fair enough. Well, Randy, you're spearheading that then, huh?
Well, I, I have no problem doing that.
Perfect, thanks, sir.
I didn't mean to bring something up to dump on you like.
For three years, so.
I'd be happy to help you, but I'm just not in town that much.
Well, that's, that's fine. Bob is and, 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 you know, he's got, he's got a lot of contacts of different people he knows. Uh, too, so.
Well, I see what you feel like. I brought something up and then dumped it on you, but that wasn't my intent. I just was, sometimes I think about things outside the box and that.
I, you know, back three years ago, we done, we barely made it. And, uh, it wa- it was a struggle and, uh, it took. A lot of donations here and there. I mean, we, and I know at our church, we had to take up. The, for back, lack of a better word, an offering just for this, so that, that things could be bought. And, uh, but it's getting better and better. So I, I'd, I'll take care of it and, uh, Bob, you can help me if you would.
Yeah, if you need help, let me know.
Okay.
Thanks, thank you, guys. Uh, anything else? Claims, August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five to September eighth, twenty twenty five.
The total claims were five hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and twenty three dollars and thirty seven cents. The top five claims are as follows. Impa at two hundred and sixty five thousand, sixty two dollars and seventy three cents. Payroll number eighteen at sixty five thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy cents. A medical trust at thirty seven thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and thirty cents. Uh, the lease servicing center, which is the first payment on the lease, the new lease truck. Was thirty two thousand, eight hundred and forty five dollars and fifty nine cents and then B and B roofing and construction. At thirty two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars.
One question, how much did you say payroll eighteen one?
Fifty five thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy cents. We had a couple of big longevities.
On, on this, the, the claims register says payroll eighteen is eighty five thousand, one nineteen seventy.
Okay, I apologize.
No, I was just, I was just.
It was sixty five thousand.
Okay, alright.
Sorry.
Nope, that's fine. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the claims from August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five to September the eighth, twenty twenty five. The amount of five hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and twenty two dollars and thirty seven cents. So moved. A second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carry, motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. You said the, you hope we get a sign this.